Hello to everyone. We'll call this Bristol, Tennessee City Council meeting for June 6, 2017 to order. Terrell, would you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Powers?
Here.
That's Mayor Yen.
Here.
Councilwoman Green?
Here.
Councilwoman Powers?
Here.
Mayor King?
Here. I'd like to welcome everyone here and thank you for attending tonight's meeting. Your interest in city government is much appreciated. There are a number of opportunities to speak on matters of city business this evening. A sheet explaining those opportunities has been made available to you when entering the meeting room. As we go forward with tonight's agenda, I will note each time when public comment is welcome. In addition, a sign-up sheet has been provided as you enter the council chambers for those individuals desiring to address city council during the Appearance of Citizens section of the agenda. I'd like to ask Vice Mayor Jack Young to lead us in our invocation, followed by our Martyr Fire Robert to lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance.
If you will, go ahead and stand with me, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity, the freedoms you give us. We thank you for this past Memorial Day, remembering those who have served and have paid the ultimate sacrifice. I pray you give this body wisdom in the decisions we make. I pray that you would be with our community, continue to keep us protected with some of the more senseless things that go on outside of our borders. We pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please face the plaque. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Sora, do we have any additional items for our agenda tonight?
No, Mayor, the agenda is complete.
We do have one proclamation and three recognitions on the agenda this evening. First, we have a proclamation recognizing June as National Ownership Month. I'd like to ask Councilmember Lee Powers to read the proclamation. Ms. Christina Blevins is in attendance this evening to accept the proclamation on behalf of the Community Development Department.
Great, thank you. Whereas throughout our nation's history, homeownership has been central to the American way of life. Whereas since America's earliest days, homeownership has been creating community stakeholders who are active in charities and their places of worship and more likely to vote and become involved in local issues. Moreover, homeownership offers children a stable living environment and influences their development in measurable ways. Children of homeowners have higher student test scores, a higher rate of high school graduation, thereby higher earning potential and are more likely to participate in organized activities. Quite simply, our nation is made stronger by the hard-working families and individuals who participate in the American dream of homeownership. And whereas homeownership also serves as an engine of social mobility and the pathway to prosperity. In fact, owning a home is a family's quickest and surest path to self-sufficiency and provides families with stability and security. Homeownership builds wealth over time and in the long run, buying is more cost-effective than renting. And whereas today, over seventy-five million Americans are homeowners composing more than sixty-three point seven percent of America's households, the average first-time homeowner is about thirty-three at the front end of the millennial generation. Approximately eighty percent of the forty-one point four million Americans age sixty-five and older own their own home. They have the highest homeownership rate among all age groups. Every state has a homeownership rate of at least fifty percent. And whereas the federal government and the state of Tennessee are working aggressively to make homeownership more affordable and more accessible and to ensure that the dream of homeownership is available to all Americans, the city of Bristol, Tennessee joins with the federal and state government in this mission. Now therefore, I, Chad King, Mayor of Bristol, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim June 2017 as National Homeownership Month and ask all citizens within the city of Bristol to join me in recognizing the importance of providing affordable housing and the opportunity for homeownership for all Americans, the sixth day of June 2017. Good evening. As Councilwoman Powers said, throughout our nation's history, homeownership has been central to the American way of life. Homeownership plays a critical role in strengthening families and communities and for those reasons, our nation has long promoted homeownership. However, homeownership is not an easy task. It requires partnerships and in Bristol, we're blessed to have many partners, including Appalachian Service Project, Bristol Housing, which by the way, yesterday marked their eighth successful transition from Section Eight or Public Housing into homeownership, so congratulations to them. Eastern Eight Community Development Corporation, First Tennessee Development District, Holson Habitat for Humanity, Horizon Community Development, Tennessee Housing Development Agency. Numerous local banks and credit unions are investing in local homeownership programs and of course, our city is committed to ensuring that hard-working citizens enjoy a fair chance at becoming homeowners. So working together, we can make that American dream a reality. So thank you for this proclamation.
Next, we'd like to recognize two of our police department's reserve officers who have collectively served this community for almost thirty-five years. I'd like to ask Reserve Officer Cliff Bailey and Reserve Officer Hugh Stringer, along with Police Chief Blaine Wade, to come to the podium, please.
Mayor, I've also brought our Director of our Auxiliary and Reserves, Ms. Suzie Chandler, to help us with this tonight. We have two of our reserve officers who after over ten years in the case of Officer Bailey, twenty years, in the case of Officer Stringer, fourteen years, have dedicated their time to volunteer with the police department. The police department each year conducts citizen police academies and we typically get a handful each year that are interested in joining us in the volunteer method. In the case of Officer Bailey, he was actually a police officer when I came there with our city and who later, he went to work with FedEx and always kept his relationship with the police department. So it's really an honor for me tonight to give him this plaque. But without these folks, they donate about four thousand hours a year to our city. And if you figure per hour how much it would cost to pay someone to perform that service, that's a chunk of change. And you take someone that's done it twenty years, that's a big deal. And fourteen years, that's a lot of time and commitment. And also, we have some of their supporters here. And if they'll stand, family members too, stand up, be recognized, come on, everybody that's here. They're a very close-knit group and we're real proud to have them and present them with these little mementos of their service and time with us.
I'll just say, I've known Cliff Bailey for many years. He actually was in my husband and my wedding and means a lot to us. I don't know, it won't be the same going to the Tennessee High Football Games without you there. And I know Dennis will miss you terribly too. But, and Officer Stringer, thank you.
I'll also ditto that you and Cliff have been at our ballgames for a long time and our kids have grown up together and really proud of you. And thank you so much for your service to our city. This evening, we'd like to also recognize the winner of this year's Traffic Safety Ambassador Program. This program is a partnership of our police department and our school system. Each year, students are encouraged to design a poster with a traffic safety theme. Students chosen as winners of the poster design competition, winners of the design competition are invited to attend tonight's meeting. The winning poster will be utilized in the city's traffic safety campaign during the coming year. Major Matt Austin and Officer Nathan Green are present to recognize the winner.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, we come, this time of year is a good time. We thank you for the opportunity to come to celebrate a wonderful partnership that we have. And again, we're focused all year long on traffic safety, trying to be able to create an environment within the city that is as safe as possible for all of our residents, all the visitors that come. And we're very proud at the police department that we've partnered with the city that we have a very strong and award-winning traffic safety program within the city. Our traffic safety numbers are some of the best in the state and it's done through partnerships that we've created. And we look at, again, every year with our traffic safety programs that we put together. Also, we do a lot of enforcement, which is the kind of the part of the traffic safety that's not real pleasant with people, but it's very, very important. We also do engineering, that we look at different ways that, whether or not that there's things about how signage is done or how roadways turn and sight distances on roads to try to analyze to make sure that we make the safest roads we can. And this is the part, the education, one of the programs that we do, that we love this program because it takes the theme of traffic safety and it brings it back. I think it's one of those things that we need to remind each other every day about traffic safety. And those things, again, we see a lot of times distracted driving and DUI and all the different things that we do. Well, in this program, we take it to the school and we ask the children to think of a theme and they do all kinds of different things that we see. And we see the kids all, they talk about women putting on makeup while they're driving or people reading while they're driving. And one of the big things now, again, with of cellphones and the creation of the distracted driving that we get through cellphones and all those things. And all of those are represented in DUIs and drinking and driving and the dangers that come with those. And all of those are highlighted throughout the programs that these young students are beginning to come into the driving age and they talk with their parents. So it kind of runs the whole gamut from the youngest drivers to the most senior drivers as we all talk about those things and putting a local face on traffic safety. We partner with, this year with our Citizens Police Academy that worked with us, that judged, we brought the posters in and the group that we had in the Citizens Police Academy looked at all of the posters and they gave us who they thought was the number-one poster this year. And it'll be our partner with, as our Traffic Safety Ambassador and we'll be putting the sign-up on our website. And different things that we'll do throughout the year, we'll ask her to partner with us as we do it as this year's winner, Stephanie Venzel. If you'll come on up here with me and you're going to be the Traffic Safety for Bristol, Tennessee, we thank you for your participation and wonderful idea and poster that you gave to us this year. We thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephanie. We have one recognition on tonight's agenda. The city has over three hundred and thirty full-time and part-time employees that serve the community on a daily basis. We frequently hear of employees that go above and beyond their service. To that end, the Bristol First program has been developed to recognize their efforts. Tonight, we honor our latest recipient of the Bristol First Award. Ms. Terry Talbert, Director of Community Relations, is present to give us a brief overview of the program and announce tonight's winner.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, Mr. Sora. As we continue to present recipients of the Bristol First Award, I am so impressed by the way our employees, full-time, part-time, and about this time of year, even our seasonal workers, how they own their jobs. They're not satisfied with average and it reflects in their work. The Bristol First recipients are the employees who set themselves to a higher goal, one in which they set themselves apart by being someone that you can count on day in and day out and as a go-to person on the team. We recognize each day that our employees are our greatest asset. Our recipient tonight is Mr. Dave Taylor. Dave was nominated by Russell Whitaker, a fellow employee at the city garage. And Mr. Whitaker had this to say. Dave is in a battle with leukemia. However, you wouldn't know it by his attendance and his work performance. I apologize. He's such a dedicated person to his job. And on the days when he has chemotherapy, he will come in and work right through the treatment. Dave is taking this head on and should be recognized for his hard work and dedication to the job and to the citizens, employees of our city. Dave will tell you, I love my job and it shows. On a personal note, I've loved Dave Taylor since we were children. He's always been one of the kindest people I've ever met and he's never met a stranger. I watched Dave as he served the city as one of our greatest ambassadors. Dave drove the bus for a while and you wouldn't imagine the number phone calls that we got about Dave when he was driving the bus. I had watched Dave as he served the city, as I said, as one of his greatest ambassadors, while dealing with members of the community. He's overcome so much in his life and he's to become the man he is today. I have found that he has not let his illness define who he is. The leather, his strength and his courage has. He continues every day to be positive, optimistic and very determined. Dave, if you would step forward and allow the name.
A great asset to our city and to our community. Dave Taylor, thank you so much. We have one presentation this evening's, on this evening's agenda. Ms. Karen Turnage Boyd, Site Coordinator for the Sullivan County Family Justice Center, is with us to discuss the new center and the important services and resources available to the community. Ms. Boyd, if you'll come to the podium. And I also wanted to recognize District Attorney General Barry Stabis, who's in attendance with us as well.
All right. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor and City Council Members, thank you for having me here tonight. I'm going to try to fit forty minutes' worth of information into about eight minutes, so I'm going to just jump right into it. If I'm sitting in your seat, the first thing I want to know is, do we have the need for any more services for domestic violence victims here in our city? And the short answer to that is yes. Abuse Alternatives, which is a full-service domestic violence service provider that serves your city, does a wonderful job. They burned the candle at both ends and they are doing everything that they can do for our victims of domestic violence here. Your prosecutor's office, which is represented here tonight, takes these cases very seriously. They work very hard to prosecute our domestic violence cases and they are doing everything that they can do. Chief Wade and his police department take this very seriously and they're working hard. So we've got a bunch of agencies that are working really hard to do the very best that they can do, but we still have a problem. Tennessee ranks in the top ten states where women are most likely to be murdered by their partners. Rates in the top ten states where women are most likely to be stalked. And unfortunately, Sullivan County is right on the trajectory with that. We fit right in with those statistics that make Tennessee one of the worst states in the nation. In 2015, according to the TBI report, there were two thousand six hundred and seventy-one victims of domestic violence in our county. We have no sexual assault nurse examiners in Sullivan County, but last year, we had two hundred and sixty-eight victims of sex crimes here. Our general sessions and district court will tell you that forty percent of the cases that come through court here in Sullivan County are related to family violence in one way or another. And our adult protective services that serve Sullivan County, as of November of last year, had already received four hundred and eighty-five referrals for domestic violence against elderly, okay? Nationally, only one out of twenty-four victims of elder abuse report that crime. Only twenty-five percent of adult victims of domestic violence report that crime. These numbers reflect a very real and serious need for something to be done in Sullivan County. And I was actually contacted by these wonderful agencies. Our prosecutor's office and your police department and the Kingsport Police Department and the Sullivan County Sheriff's Office and our domestic violence service providers got together and said, "We are all doing everything that we can do. What can we do to make a difference in these numbers?" And that is how the idea of the Family Justice Center was born. Right now in our system, if we have a victim of domestic violence, they have to drive all around to access these services that are being provided. They have to go to the police department, they have to go to the courthouse to get the protective order. If they know about abuse alternatives, they've got to get there. Legal Aid of East Tennessee provides civil services, civil legal services for victims of domestic violence. They're located in Johnson City. They have an attorney who will come here to Sullivan County, but many of our victims don't know that. And so I mapped out, what would we have to do if we were a victim of domestic violence here in Sullivan County and needed to get a protective order, see the police and get help from legal aid? And it involved three hours of travel in a car, assuming that our victim even has a car. And we all know, there's not public transportation that's going to get on there. So this is what we've got right now. This is what the Family Justice Center looks like. The Family Justice Center is that big red circle in the background that's doing nothing but holding together all of the smaller yellow circles. And you can see represented inside the Family Justice Center is those existing agencies. We have Child Protective Services. We have the Bristol, Tennessee Police Department. And we've got our District Attorney's Office all pulled into one center where victims just have to make it one place and they can see everyone that they need to see and get all the help that they need. In the Family Justice Center, we're not asking for Chief Wade and his police department to do much more than they're doing now. They're going to continue doing what it is they do. Our prosecutors are going to continue doing what they do and so is abuse alternatives. They're just going to do it from a new location and where they're better engaged and able to work more collaboratively with the partner agencies. And now you're saying, "Oh Karen, you make this sound wonderful and like we're going to change the world, but will this work?" And this is the very best thing about the Family Justice Center model. It started in 2002. We have fifteen years' worth of statistics that show us this is the way to fight family violence in your community. The first Family Justice Center opened in San Diego in 2002. In 2007, it was recognized by the U.S. Department of Justice as the best practice for fighting family violence in your community. And documented outcomes include reduced homicides, reduced fear and anxiety for victims and their children, and my personal favorite, dramatically increased community support for services to these victims. They're able to get more services and access more help than they could before because the community is taking ownership of what is happening in the homes. So the Sullivan County Commission voted last June, it's actually our anniversary, to accept a $240,000 grant from the Office of Criminal Justice Programs in Tennessee to fund the planning of this center. So that's what hired me. I've done survivor focus groups and talked to leaders of many nonprofits of all of our law enforcement agencies to figure out exactly what does Sullivan County need. So in the time, in the last year, this is sort of what we've accomplished. We've opened as a separate corporation. The Family Justice Center of Sullivan County will be a standalone 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We were granted that status in March. We've put together our Board of Directors. We've gotten the county together and have memorandums of understanding signed by the Bristol, Tennessee Police Department, Kingsport Police Department, Sullivan County Sheriff's Department, our Kingsport Shelter, our Bristol Shelter, the Children's Advocacy Center and Legal Aid of East Tennessee, as well as the District Attorney's Office. All of these agencies have signed on an agreement of supporting the Family Justice Center, participating in our monthly meetings and being part of us once we open. In this last year though, mainly we've been planning programs, we have looked for opportunities to actually reach out and start providing some services to our agencies. And two of the things that we've accomplished here in Bristol, the first is that we worked, I worked with the Assistant District Attorney who tries the domestic violence cases in Sullivan County and we put together a brand-new training program for police officers. We ran that first here in Bristol, Tennessee. The Bristol, Tennessee Patrol Officers were the first officers in the state to have post-certified training on strangulation, lethality and how that relates to domestic violence. Strangulation overlaps a lot with police lethality, police getting murdered. So we see this as a way to help keep our law enforcement officers safer. But Kalen Render, who's the Assistant District Attorney, and I came out and taught this class five times. If any Bristol, Tennessee police officer sees me, they will probably call me the crazy strangulation lady. But we had a lot of fun working with them and being able to bring that education, a new program, to them. The second thing that we've done is the OCJP grant funded a national training. And we, from Bristol, we took your Bristol Child Protective Service Lead Investigator. We took Lieutenant Debbie Richmond from the Bristol, Tennessee Police Department and we took the Director of Abuse Alternatives. To this is actually an international training. It was in Milwaukee this year. But there were people there from all fifty states, from various nations that have family justice centers, and it's a three-day training on trauma-informed care, how can you provide better services, and how can you build a family justice center in your community to better meet the needs. The local partners who signed the MOUs, I put in your slide just so you'd have it, but there are eight partners who are supporting this. And as you can see, we recently had a center donated to us. One of our big challenges was finding a physical location that would be suitable for a family justice center. And then assuming we found that, finding out how we were going to buy it. Because our grant didn't fund the physical location at all, it just funds the planning. But Mr. Jim Street, who owns JA Street Construction, donated a building. It's pictured here. It's in Blountville, at the end of a dead-end road in a beautiful little subdivision that will give our clients anonymity and privacy. And so over the last few months, we've been working to renovate that, and that'll be where we're housed when we open. We'll be providing services out of that location. We've had many donors and volunteers, and I have those listed. We've gotten a lot of support from the community. And hopefully you all have heard of the Family Justice Center. I will say, the Bristol Herald Courier has really done a great job of sort of following this, and particularly Laura Spell has stayed in touch with me and has been very interested in the progress of the center. And I appreciate the press that she's given us in this. But that's where we are in our project. That's a very brief overview of what a family justice center is and why we need it. I can stand here and tell you all I want to, how much we need it, but fortunately for me, I have someone who's in a much better position to tell you. Our District Attorney General for Sullivan County, Barry Stabis, is the person that got this project rolling. I mean, I call him our champion. He's the one that wants to get this done. And when I was contacted about this project, what I saw was our District Attorney General standing shoulder to shoulder with the Bristol, Tennessee Police Chief, and the Kingsport Police Chief, and the Sullivan County Sheriff's Office. And these people are in the best position to say, "Are we meeting these needs, or are we not?" And they said, "Let's do something different." And so I've really appreciated the support that I've gotten from Bristol. I've appreciated, of course, the support from the general, and he's here to briefly speak about the need that we have in the community. Thank you all very much.
I think Karen's run out for eight minutes, so I'll be really brief. As she said, domestic violence is one of those huge problems we have in our community. And as she said, forty percent of our caseload comes from domestic violence-related. It has a high recidivism rate. That means that it happens over and over again. And it's also what we see in mostly women, and we also include children, and the elderly, and the vulnerable adults. But all these folks seem to be in a cycle of violence that they can't get out of. We hope that Family Justice Center will aid police, aid prosecutors, by holding the folks that do wrong responsible criminally. But we want to go beyond that. We want to provide services for those people that are victims, those people that are caught in the system, those people that are afraid to report, those people who give up, those people who goes back into an environment of violence. We're hoping this, it's not a fantasy, it's not a utopia, but we think it's a resource that we'll have, where all the law enforcement agencies and all the people that do this work, day in and day out, and want to make a difference, that we're going to give them the building, the physical site, we're going to give them the resources, the training, we're going to give them this working together in a relationship, we're going to give them the opportunity and the ability to do better for our citizens, especially those that are most vulnerable at all. That is, the folks that get abused sexually and physically, that are neglected and taken advantage of financially. We want to give them a place of comfort where they can come, and that they can heal, and they can become productive citizens, and all the folks that provide services and spend their life in this endeavor of ending domestic violence will see some results of success in Bristol and Kingsport and Sullivan County. Thank you.
Very well said and very well spoken. Thank you so much. We appreciate the information and the awareness. We have one public hearing scheduled for this evening, and it is hereby open for Ordinance 17-3, adopting a budget and appropriating funds for the fiscal year July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize?
Yes, Mayor, I'd be glad to. As you indicated, Ordinance 17-3 will be considered later on this evening on second reading. It was approved on first reading last month and is the subject of our day-long budget work session in late April. The fiscal 2018 budget totals $106,310,82. Does reflect an increase of just under $7.3 million from fiscal 2017 budget. Municipal government portion of the budget stands at $61,000, excuse me, $61,466,806. Reflects an increase of just over $5.1 million. Proposed budget focuses on key themes of economic development, enhanced city services, and improved quality of life. Budget continues all city programs and service as in the past, while making strategic capital investments to meet our future needs of the community. Major projects include the opening of Fire Station Number Five at the Neazix 74 area, reconstruction of East Cedar Street, major improvements at the water filtration and wastewater treatment plant. The budget also has key partnerships that focus on the development of the Tri-City Airport, Jero Space Park, site development with Bristol Business Park, and this is a partnership with BTES, and as well as Sullivan Networks. Improvement at Partnership Part Two, once again in partnership with Networks. And then also the construction of a new county-wide animal shelter in conjunction with Kingsport, Sullivan County, as well as the city of Bluff City, or town of Bluff City. Budget includes a total average annual wage adjustment of three percent for employees. This includes a 2.5 percent merit increase for employees meeting performance expectations, and an additional one percent for employees who are below the market wage study recommendations that were presented to you earlier this year. Proposed budget maintains the current property tax rate, solid waste fees, stormwater fees, and water and sewer rates. The ordinance to adopt a tax rate will be considered later this year after we receive the certified tax roll. School system portion of the budget totals $44,843,276, and reflects an increase of $2.16 million. Municipal government portion of the fiscal 2018 budget remains the same as that presented to City Council in your April work session, as well as that considered on first reading during your May meeting.
Would anyone in the audience like to address council on Ordinance 17-3, adopting the budget and appropriating funds? If there is, please come to the podium and state your name and address. Having seen none, this public hearing is hereby closed. Next on our agenda this evening is the appearance of citizens. This section provides an opportunity for the public to address City Council on any matter that is not on the printed agenda for formal consideration. Comments are limited to matters of city business only. A response will likely not be given at this time, since most cases neither the council nor the city manager will be prepared to effectively respond to the concern. The city manager will look into the matter, report back to the city council, or as appropriate, have staff meet with you in an effort to satisfy your concern. Comments are limited to three minutes per individual. Groups are encouraged to select a spokesperson to represent them. I have, I have been provided a list of individuals designed to address City Council this evening, and we have Ms. Wanda Barti on the list first.
Hello, I'm Wanda Barti, 4015 Virginia Avenue, Bristol, Tennessee. Last month, an individual came before this body and requested that prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance be omitted from your City Council meetings. I would personally like to thank you for observing these very important tenants of our American society. This nation was definitely established on Christian principles through the written forms of the Declaration of Independence, Constitution, and also the Bill of Rights. Additionally, patriotism should be a part of our daily lives. Our founding fathers willingly gave everything in the quest for independence, and their sacrifices should not go without honor. For us to have the freedom to voice opinions and exchange ideas here tonight, blood has been shed, lives were lost, and families have allowed total disruption of their households. They deserve to know that we salute the flag, stand for the national anthem, and honor the military who fought for this freedom. We, as Americans, have carried our love and respect for God and country into many nations around the world. Those oppressed people groups have obtained freedom and peace of mind because America came to their defense. They knew that the American way, under divine guidance, had and still works best. As a reminder, I realized when I was looking over this that D-Day took place exactly seventy-three years ago today. America would be a very dark place if public prayer and a show of patriotism were removed. The loud objections of a few misguided individuals do not represent the hearts and standards of the majority of true Americans. Thank you, again, as the leaders of Bristol, Tennessee, for your dignity and faithfulness to honor and respect such precious sacrifices and the privileges they have brought to American citizens. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Barti. Next, we have Mr. Eddie Mabry.
Mayor, council members, we have come tonight once again to reiterate our calls that we have brought before this council concerning the Sunnybrook subdivision and our challenge to the building of the Intimate Treasures. We had sought out to have, I guess, some type of dialogue where we was able to be with our citizens of the Sunnybrook subdivision and also this council, because we seem to believe that it's still not working as it should on our behalf. We look at our, the public, well, not the public, but we look at the people that run for office, and they are elected by citizens, and they have a tendency to do what we believe is usurp authority. We believe that in some ways we are doing the taxation without the representation. So we are back once again with those concerns that we have originally brought, a hundred and some eight or six people that were of the Sunnybrook subdivision that signed on to a petition. We have also asked this body that has brought the people forth that are on the zoning board that they would terminate those individuals that has demonstrated the inability of running a business meeting properly. And we have not heard anything concerning this matter. Also, we asked that they would terminate the city attorney, who we also pay by paying taxes. We have not heard anything from this body as to our desire for how the monies are being spent by the city council and management that the taxpayers are paying. And we would like to have, and we have the Bristol Herald Courier here today, and once again, the public television that we are going out over the airwaves, and we want to hear something from you before we, I guess, have to try and organize greater than just the Sunnybrook subdivision with our concerns. Because the things that are happening there can happen in any other place in the city of Bristol at any time. And I just feel that we need to have a better relationship than we are having with this council.
Thank you, Mr. Mabry. Is there anyone else that would like to address City Council on any matter?
I didn't hear your name on the list.
Okay, just please state your name and address.
Sandra Grubbs, 112 Wonder Valley Road, Bristol, Tennessee. Well, not everybody gets the newspaper, but in the Bristol Herald Courier, there were three things that came to mind. The first would be the tragic death of Ron Hillman, the property assessor for Sullivan County, who passed away very suddenly yesterday. And it's a loss to our county, and he did his job with excellence. Secondly, I was very pleased as I read the whole article about the First Tennessee Development District, the Alliance for Business Training for the Youth Build Program, and that was mentioned earlier tonight. I was struck by the fact that young people ages sixteen to twenty-four took part in that under the supervision of a construction company, and that they were offered an opportunity, if they had not finished high school, to get their GED. And I think that that is, that was a real positive thing for this city and for that woman who now has a home and a place to live, like we've talked about. Lastly, I'm struck by, we have our Bristol Is, let's see, our branding project, I wanted to give it the right name. So, and we've seen those, we've seen all the different signs and everything up. I would like to offer a suggestion that the next time we have an opportunity such as this, that we might look into finding within the confines of our own city, people to participate in this type of project. We spent a lot of money, and it's done. But I thought about those young people that were able to help with that other thing, and there is a group of young people in another city who have built a cube that may go and be used by NASA to go into space, just as a high school opportunity for one semester. So I don't want us as a city to neglect, to look at what we have in our city in the ways of, new ways of thinking about projects such as Bristol Is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grubbs. Is there anyone else in attendance that would like to address council on any matter that's not on the printed agenda? Having seen none, we have no appointments to boards or commissions to be made this evening, so let's move on. The next on our agenda is the second reading of Ordinance 17-3, adopting a budget and appropriating funds for the fiscal year July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018. Mr. Sora summarized this issue during the public hearing earlier this evening. Does anyone of the council have a question for staff?
I've got one brief question. If you could just expound upon the, why we have that approximate seven million in the increase, and what the majority of that is for.
Okay, of the seven million, approximately five million of that is related to the municipal budget. Substantial amount of that becomes part of the Chapter 420. We have to account for the revenues that are derived through the sales tax increment that is shared back with the developer, and that's some six million and odd, six billion odd dollars in that regard. We also have to account for the TIF payments that are made to developers, not in the Chapter 420 project, but also in other areas of the community. In addition to that, certainly there is an increase in terms of salaries associated with the hiring of nine new firefighters at Station Five, as well as the salary increases across the board.
Thank you.
We also have two other projects that are the capital nature that I'd like to speak to. One is the regional project of Aerospace Park at Tri-Cities Airport, and Bristol, Tennessee has a pro-rata share of the cost of that development, as well as, once again, a pro-rata share or proportionate use share in the development of the new animal shelter in Sullivan County.
I wanted to ask that question just to make sure people understood. The, a lot of that is essentially passed through, reformalities of how it's counted. It's there, and it's for some really valuable parts of what we need to provide. Thank you.
I know in one of our work sessions, Margaret had brought up about best practices and procedures at SBK, and... and procedures at SBK, and, you know, that we would probably, it would be an advantage to see those in writing. Do we have any, has there been any development along those lines?
Well, I think the SBK, as we proceed further into that, and again, I think we have to get through the budget process first, but as we get into the next fiscal year, there will need to be an interlocal agreement that will be between Bristol, Kingsport, Sullivan County, Ambler City, that will define the financial aspect of how each party would move forward. That interlocal agreement would not address operational issues. I think those are, would need to be asked of the directors and the board of directors of SBK, which I think is contemplating a change of name to Pet Works, but those questions are best addressed to that board, and then this city, because the city council should have a clear understanding of the responses and their operational practices before entering into an agreement. But the interlocal agreement would not address those. That would just address the financial aspects of the relationship.
Any further questions? Do we have a motion to take action?
Motion.
Second. Would any member of council like to discuss ordinance seventeen-three further? Haven't seen none. The public had an opportunity to comment on this issue during the public hearing, so I believe we're ready for a vote.
Councilman Powers?
Yes.
That's Mayor Young?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilwoman Farah Robin?
Yes.
Mayor King?
Yes.
Under the category of resolutions for council consideration this evening, we have resolution seventeen forty-seven authorizing the acceptance of certain streets as public streets. Mr. Sora, will you please summarize?
So, Mayor, we're glad to, our code of ordinances does require that city council formally approve the acceptance of road improvement projects into the publicly maintained street system. This has historically been done by resolution following a review by the Bristol, Tennessee Planning Commission, Regional Planning Commission. This was done at their April nineteenth meeting, in which they gave favorable review to the acceptance of the following streets. Before I read these streets, I'd also like to point out that the Department of Public Works has reviewed not only the plans for these streets, but also inspected the construction to ensure that they are, that they have been designed and constructed to a city standard. Of the six streets, the first is Stevens Trail from Highway eleven W to Pinnacle Parkway. Second is Brighton Place from Old Jonesboro Road to the end of the road. Third is Bradford Lane from Brighton Place to the end of the road. Fourth is Trammell Road from Old Jonesboro Road southeast to the end of the road. Fifth is East Wilkshire Place from Trammell Road to the end of the road, and sixth is West Wilkshire Place from Trammell Road to the end of the road.
Does any member of council have questions for staff? Do we have a motion to take action?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Would any member of council like to discuss resolution seventeen forty-seven further? Would any one of the audience like to address council on this matter? Terrell, let's take the vote.
Councilwoman Farah?
Yes.
That's Mayor Young?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilwoman Farah Robin?
Yes.
Mayor King?
Yes.
Another resolution for council to consider this evening, we have resolution seventeen forty-eight authorizing the Friends of Still's Creek Nature Center and the park to host an event at the Still Creek Nature Center. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize?
Yes, Mayor, you may recall from your April twenty-fifth work session that the possibility was advanced by the Friends of Stacy Grayson Memorial Park at Still Creek, Inc., to propose to host a wine and cheese open house event in the newly completed addition to the nature center. Purpose of the event is to recognize major donors that contributed to the fundraising effort, and also to recognize other leaders in the community for their support of the project. The event is proposed for Thursday, June twenty-ninth. In accordance with our code of ordinances, permission must be obtained from city council to allow the service of alcohol within a public building or public space. This authorization is also a prerequisite for the Tennessee Alcohol and Beverage Commission's consideration for their application for a special occasion license. The Friends group is fully aware of their obligations as set forth by the Tennessee ABC Board, and we bring this to you in the form of a resolution for consideration.
Does any member of council have questions for staff?
One question or clarification, is this a one-time-use application?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Any, can we have a motion for the item, please?
I'll move to approve. Second.
All right. Would any member of council like to discuss resolution seventeen forty-eight further?
Will there be the opportunity for other organizations to have this same privilege?
I'm sorry?
Will there be the opportunity for other organizations, if they should ask, to have the opportunity for the same privilege?
Yes, there's certainly an opportunity to do that, much like this event, much like the microbrew we had in our downtown center last fall. It does require, according to our code of ordinances, permission to use a public space by city council, and we do that by resolution. So, any such request would come back to this, to this body, and has been our practice in the past, it would be discussed at a work session prior to the formal consideration.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Would any one, go ahead.
I just would say that, I was gonna do it during the end comments, but the next day, on June thirtieth, the nature center, they're gonna have an open house for the public to be able to look through and see what's been done so far.
Okay. Would anyone in the audience like to address council on this matter? Terrell, let's take the vote.
Councilwoman Powers?
Yes.
That's Mayor Young?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilwoman Farah Robin?
Yes.
Mayor King?
Yes.
This brings us to the consent agenda. Mr. Sora, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor, item A, minutes of the May second, twenty-seventeen city council meeting. Item B, resolution seventeen forty-nine, authorizing purchase of emergency warning siren. Item C, resolution seventeen fifty, authorizing payment for legal services. Item D, resolution seventeen fifty-one, authorizing purchase of an emergency generator replacement for Fire Station Four. Item E, resolution seventeen fifty-two, awarding a bid for the purchase of firefighting turnout gear. Resolution seventeen fifty-three, accepting a grant for the U.S. Department of Homeland Security. Item G, resolution seventeen fifty-four, authorizing the emergency repair to Fire Department Ladder One. Item H, resolution seventeen fifty-five, awarding a bid for the purchase of Highway Salt. Item I, resolution seventeen fifty-six, awarding a proposal for reinsurance of the self-funded health insurance plan. Item J, resolution seventeen fifty-seven, approving a grant agreement with the Virginia Department of Transportation for utilization of federal highway administration funds for the Bristol Metropolitan Planning Organization. Item K, resolution seventeen fifty-eight, approving a change order for vehicle exhaust system at Fire Station Five. Item L, resolution seventeen fifty-nine, authorizing entry into a contract for services and cost-sharing agreement for sinking crank pump station hydraulic study. Item M, resolution seventeen sixty, approving a contract with T-DOT for the maintenance of state highways. Item N, resolution seventeen sixty-one, approving a participating employee agreement on deferred compensation plan two. And item O, resolution seventeen sixty-two, approving a comprehensive plan advisory committee.
Would any member of council like any item removed from the consent agenda? Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Terrell, let's take the vote.
Councilwoman Powers?
Yes.
That's Mayor Young?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilwoman Farah Robin?
Yes.
Mayor King?
Yes.
Next, we have our Board of Education liaison report, and I think Mr. Jim Butcher is here to brief us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council folks. You know, it's summer, but that doesn't mean the school system is shut down, because it certainly hasn't. We have a lot of things that we're doing. We, of course, hope that students and teachers are having a much deserved break, but things still go on educationally. We have just finished a STEM design camp at Anderson Elementary School. Elementary schools are also doing a five-week Discover Reading Camp. They serve forty-five K through second graders, and we provide other types of reading intervention also. We are all about a summer feeding program also. We're also doing mobile book programs, again, in conjunction with that summer feeding program. Major renovations are going on right now at the high school. We're doing, the pool looks like a Bosnia, but it's coming along. There's a major renovation to that facility, well-needed. And we're doing phase-one bathrooms at, of bathroom renovations at Vance, I'm sorry, at Tennessee High School and Viking Hall. We were able to attend the exchange meeting at the Frank Winston Auditorium, which, of course, is a public-private partnership, and it was really well-done, and I think you all agree that our cooling system works very, very well there. Just have to worry about the timer just a little bit. And we sure increase and appreciate the city council's increase to the school district's operating funds. Also, we appreciate funds to support ongoing capital needs, property insurance premiums, support for advanced placement testing for students, that's a huge thing for us. And as we all know, the economic development and education do go hand-in-hand, and the city council's support for our city schools speaks volumes to prospective employees and citizens. And I, for one, really believe that when some of these prospective employers and folks working for these employers see some of these updated buildings becoming more attractive, that it will make a difference to folks moving into our city and also being employed within our city. I was, just from a teaching standpoint, as an English teacher, the branding, I like that, Bristol is, because, you know, when you complete it, it's, you know, is is a linking verb, and anything after has gotta be a complement. It's gotta be a predicate adjective, a descriptive thing, or a nominative thing, and Bristol is nothing without the completer, and the completer is nothing without Bristol. So I think that's a great thing, and if you remember your diagramming days, it was one of the basics taught. And if asked, the city, the school system might offer some more completers if you want it. I don't even know, this may be one of them, but, you know, Bristol is partnership. You know, the Ida Jones Tennis Center certainly was one of these partnerships, its completes and so forth, and, you know, Bristol is tennis, I might suggest. And just to brag just a little bit on our kids and our coaches, you know, our tennis team has just completed four-year running state champions, four years. Now, that's never been duplicated in the state of Tennessee, but we did it. We have four seniors on that team who never, ever lost a team match to a public school in the state of Tennessee, never. And, yeah, Jacob Marshall, one of our seniors, became the most decorated tennis player in the history of the state of Tennessee. He has seven state championships, so Bristol is tennis. So, thank you again for all you do for us, and thanks.
Thank you.
Very well said, Jim. City majors report.
It's hard to follow that, Mayor. Couple of reminders, we do have a joint work session with the Board of Education on Thursday, June fifteenth, at five-thirty in the school administration building. This will be a continuation of the dialogue with the MGT, our consulting firm that is developing the school facility study. This is not the final product, this will be another step along the way, but it's an opportunity to discuss several options with the Board of Education, as well as city councils. I know you want to attend that meeting. Also, remind you of the city council work session on Tuesday, June twenty-seventh, at five-thirty in the annex. Then I'd like to take an opportunity to recognize Terry Talbert, the staff of the Community Relations Department, Tom Anderson with our staff, April Leeds with Bristol, Tennessee Essential Services, and many other people from Tim Beavers and his staff, Terry Napier and his staff, Blaine Wade and his staff, and with the, that put together the large event that we had in our downtown last Thursday evening. But the brand process, the brand rollout, I think the enthusiasm that is coming out of that, I just want to give you all a great shout-out. I appreciate what you all have done, what you've put into this process, and just thank you very much. Also, I'd like to recognize Tara Music, Tim Beavers, Holly Varan, and Mary Lee Williams, and their efforts, and they are our budget team, and they've produced a balanced budget again this year. As we indicated earlier, it focused on maintaining services, it focused on strategic investments into our future, it focused on partnerships, and all of this was obtained with maintaining the tax rate, and also no increase in fees and services associated with utilities, with solid waste, with stormwater, and I really appreciate their efforts over the last seven months in putting that together, and it won't be long till we're starting on fiscal twenty-nineteen. Thank you.
Oh, no. Lucky.
Thank you, Mr. Sora. Now we have city council comments. Who wants to go first?
I've got a couple. I'll start out with, Mr. Butcher touched on one of those that helped ignite some of my excitement. As a child, I remember going to the library and those summer reading programs, and the supplement to that was some of the schools providing some additional reading programs. That helped spark my interest and enthusiasm for reading, and I know I got in trouble a few nights for trying to read after the lights were supposed to be out because of that appreciation, and I've seen that kindled in some of the programs that are going on, both at Avoca and at the main library. It's amazing to see how big some of those groups have gotten with some special TLC from some of the leaders that have gotten involved with that, and I have great appreciation for that, given what it did for me. Secondly, a few months back, I had the opportunity to hear about the Sullivan County Family Justice Center, and it struck me, I think the thing I didn't expect when I walked away from that was how many people just take that threat that you can't get anything without me, so you might as well not even leave. And that hit a chord with me, that not having been in that situation, it ended up resonating the way that Karen shared that story, and I think by having those services combined and a one-stop shop, so to speak, makes it so much easier, and that's why I'm grateful to see, I've seen her presentation a couple of different times at some different civic club meetings, and appreciate the champion that we have, well, the several champions that we have here in our area, and look forward to seeing that open and then continue to have partners, and I know there's a lot of publicity to get the word out, but thank you for those efforts, both the vision to bring it, General Stabis, and Karen for helping to be the messenger for those things.
So many of the things that have been presented tonight may appear to be in isolation, but really, they're all related one to another. The Community Outreach Center for the Bristol, Tennessee City Schools is a very close neighbor of ours down on the Parkway, and I had the opportunity a couple of weeks ago to speak with its director, Kay Ward, who we have talked together and been involved in the community for years, and we talked about, just about so many things, everything that we possibly could, but we landed on reading buddies, and how important reading buddies is and has been and will be in the coming time into our educational system. There is statistical data, you know, we're all driven by statistics and we've got to see it, but there is statistical data that shows that reading buddies has greatly improved our children's reading abilities and performances, not to mention the emotional strength that they draw from those reading buddies, watching them walk in each week. It's such an important program, and I hope that we'll be very cognizant of the fact that it's, it is a really great feel-good program, but it is a program of great educational merit. To continue along that same line, the Bristol, Tennessee, Virginia Board of Realtors hosted a scholarship essay contest, and Christina, this speaks to the resolution that we offered, proclamation we offered tonight. I had the opportunity, as I have for the past three or four years, to read through the essays. There were forty-four, forty-five essays this year, and many of the students that write these essays do not have the opportunity to be in a home that's owned by their parents. They oftentimes in their essays, they'll describe moving from one They oftentimes in their essays, they'll describe moving from one house to another, trying to make each house a home, and the premise of the essays is, you know, what will your home be like when you have that opportunity to have a home of your own? And it's just, they're fascinating to read, they're so hopeful, and I think that it goes back to those educational moments. When we talk about the Family Justice Center, this is, strikes a close chord with me. Our son has a very good friend in Nashville, and she is an assistant district attorney there, and her whole premise is domestic abuse, and it is with non-English speaking. And they have a team there with an investigator, detective, and several police officers, and the stories that are told, if that's not part of your world or of our world, it's really hard to imagine what that world is like, and I think to make it as user-friendly, and the word that you used, Karen, that struck me is collaborative. It's so much easier, if this can be easy, to provide services in a collaborative manner that are closely located one to another, and we have tried to do that in our own community, and accolades to General Barry Stabas and to Blaine Wade for their law enforcement areas on behalf of the City of Bristol, Sullivan County, and Kingsport, and to Jim Street. You know, you just never know when Jim's going to pop up and do something wonderful, do you? But he does on a regular basis, and he usually does it quietly with great humility, and so a great appreciation to that. To change wheels just a little bit, the Paramount, I don't know if y'all have noticed the change in direction of some of its programming, but there has definitely been. Dave Mason will be with us Fourth of July weekend. Leanne Womack will be here in July. Then we have various Fleetwood Mac cover band that's going to be there in October. If you haven't been to a performance at the Paramount lately, take a look, there are a lot of good things going on there. And about Ron Hillman, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Ron has served our community very well. He's been a staunch supporter of many great projects, and he will be tremendously missed. So as we walk on into summer, a lot of great stuff happening. Friends of Still's Creek, I'm now, have been, but an even bigger fan than usual with Margaret as we move on with Friends of Still's Creek. It's exciting. If you haven't had a chance to be out there to see it, you won't believe it's in Bristol. It's something.
I'd just like to send out some thank yous to the city staff for the fiscal responsibility and to keep, continue to keep a little spending. We appreciate that. Also, for the branding, tremendous amount of work we're into that, but of course, now is really when the hard work begins in implementing it and keeping that alive and really using that in the school system. Please really trademark that and use it, we love that. Thank you to all the people in the community that volunteer. You make a huge difference in the lives of other people, and just the fact that you volunteer, it's a tremendous blessing to the people who do it. So if you have free time on your hands and you want to do yourself a favor, get out and volunteer and give to others. It'll make you really appreciate all that you have. Thank you to Dave Taylor for honoring us with his presence. We adore his work ethic and his beautiful spirit, and we're the ones that are truly blessed by his presence. Lastly, just to address the domestic violence issue, people who are suffering from domestic violence, I think it can be very confusing because people that are supposed to love you and protect you are actually harming you, and that can cause you to feel degraded. It's very devaluing to life, and when you combine that with substance abuse, you never know when that is going to escalate out of control. I had a close friend who was able to get out of a situation, another friend whose sister was murdered Friday by her husband, and he also killed his father. So it's not going to get any better, so if you're in a situation, you need to get out.
I'll also talk for a second about the Justice Center, but a little bit different angle. Either I missed it or y'all didn't say that this model, there's only like forty in the United States at this time. Is that number correct?
I think it's eighty-two.
Eighty-two, and we have how many in Tennessee?
There are seven.
Seven in Tennessee. How come I thought there were eight?
We will be number eight.
Okay, there are eight in Tennessee. Anyway, but it's an instance where Tennessee is really on cutting edge and really moving forward with best practices and doing things that really work and really make a difference. So we can be really proud of our state with the work that is being done as well. Also, I wanted to thank our Police Reserve Program. It does show a difference at our different events. You can see it, you can feel it. It really is a great program, and really appreciate that we have it and have had it for as long as we have had it, and it's a great opportunity for our citizens as well. And the same thing, Dave Taylor, thank you for recognizing him, but also thanks to you and Terry and those people who came up with the idea to recognize our employees on a regular basis. So I appreciate that a whole lot to have that opportunity. Also, wanted just to note that we have Fourth of July coming up and a parade and celebration and fireworks, et cetera, and we are celebrating the birth of our nation, and also, we just had Memorial Day. Hopefully, people did spend some time recognizing our past, and I have had a couple of conversations. The Memorial Day service, I think we all regret that we already had a work session scheduled at the same time as the park celebration, so I hope in the future we can make sure that we get that on our calendars so that we do not conflict with those kinds of programs. And, let's see, what was the other thing? Jobs for Life is a program that offers great opportunity to folks. It's a program out of North Carolina that we've been looking at here, and on June fourteenth, there'll be a meeting at Bristol Motor Speedway. Anyone is welcome to attend. It's a pretty long meeting. Somebody from North Carolina is coming for training, and it's being looked at by Tri-Cities. Bristol's been looking at it for quite some time, but it's helping find mentors in our community that work one-on-one with people for an extended time period, helping them build the skills they need, get the education they need, and be prepared for the workforce. It doesn't find them jobs, but it's a personal support to help people get jobs and keep those jobs. So we're really excited that that's a program that we're looking at bringing here to Bristol in the near future. Also, I wanted to express my pleasure, my excitement about the branding. I was nervous that I might not like it, because I can be pretty critical, and I am very, very pleased. Also, I'm wondering if it might not be good, maybe on our July agenda, to just have a little bit of an update on how that's been done, and also, at that time, maybe Terry can go over also how we went through the process too, so that people understand what our process is for selecting people, and I think we've just recently had a vendor meeting. Was that recently, or is it coming up?
Yeah, about four months ago.
Okay, so we'll be having another one in another few months, so we want to make sure that that is well advertised. And then the last thing I just wanted to say is to take a moment to thank everybody who elected me. I wanted to thank everybody for confidence in me, and to, I wanted to also especially say thanks to the team of folks who worked really, really hard on this campaign, and to thank the folks that I visited in their homes, and I got to listen to you, and you took time to talk with me, and really appreciate that, and I can say probably this time for campaigning, I had more fun than I've ever had and did not anticipate a for-sure outcome in any direction. I look forward to working together with the citizens, with community, with this council, with Bill Sora, and with our awesome city staff that we are so proud of and that go the extra mile every day and a lot of times every night, including hot dogs and cleanup and whatever that isn't in their job description that comes forward. So I thank everybody for this opportunity and look forward to the next four years. Thank you.
Margaret mentioned Bristol Motor Speedway. In about a week and a half, we're going to have some thirty, forty, I don't know how many thousands of people that'll be coming to Bristol for the great event at Thunder Valley, so we're looking forward to them, and that's what I'm so proud of, our staff within the city. Their customer service efforts towards those who visit here are just great, impeccable. We very much appreciate the hard work, and I know we'll have some overtime that week, but we appreciate all of the hard work that you guys put into that. I'd also like to follow up on the Reading Buddies comments, and thank you for mentioning that. I'm very proud of our staff in the sense that we have several of our staff members that are serving with Reading Buddies and are reading partners, including in our police and in our fire departments, and I encourage our department heads to encourage their employees to please serve. It's a great partnership, you know, with our education system, and we appreciate all of those that are serving as reading mentors for children. I do believe that our next council meeting will fall on July fourth, which I'm assuming will move to July eleventh, and so I want to make everybody aware of that. Ditto's on so many different things. Ron Hillman, great loss and such a good friend, and Kathy and I are going to miss him a lot. I wanted to also, there was mention of boards and commissions and volunteers and things of that nature. If you'll go to our website, you can check and see all of the vacancies that are on all boards, and please apply for those. We need your help in multiple areas, and there are several boards that need members on them. I'll also say again, thank you to, along with other board members and committee members, again, to Cliff Bailey and Hugh Stringer, who were reserve officers for a long period of time and staples within our community. We appreciate you. Just to recognize a few folks, Joel State and former mayor Beth Reinhardt from the Chamber, Steve Cypress from the Housing Authority, and I want to say especially thanks to District Attorney General Barry Stabas and Karen Boyd for all of the information that you've presented to us tonight and the ongoing efforts within domestic abuse. Thank you so much. And with that, we are adjourned.